Timeless music, timely news. We're Radio Kansas. I'm Michael Abels. The time now is 3:59.
Radio Kansas is funded by Prairie Harvest Market in Delhi, 601 North Main, and Historic Downtown Newton, featuring local seasonal...
(audio cuts out)
It's four o'clock. I'd like to go ahead and call this March 21 meeting. This line of City Commission order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Peck.
Here.
Commissioner Angel.
Here.
Commissioner Jennings.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Vanir.
Here.
Would you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence?
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's now time for the Citizens' Open Forum, which is a time for anyone to come forward and express concerns or questions about anything on their mind, as long as it's something that is not on today's agenda. So if there's anyone here for that today, we'd welcome you to come forward. If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approved the minutes of March 14, 2011. Item 6.2, approved the minutes of March 15, 2011. Item 6.3, authorize the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus upgrade kits and supportive equipment in the amount of $32,976. Item 6.4, resolution number 116810, authorizing staff to prepare and submit an application to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency for the Community Action for a Renewed Environment Level 2 Grant.
Is there any item that Commissioner would like to see removed from the consent agenda? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Mayor, I'd move for approval of the consent agenda.
It's been moved in second. We approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero. On to administration.
Item 8.1, second reading ordinance number 11-10,593, amending Chapter 8, Article 1, Division 1 of Section 8-12.5.4.1 of the Slina Code to provide a local amendment to the International Building Code, Section 903.2.7 pertaining to automatic fire sprinkler systems.
Ordinance number 11-10,593 was passed on first reading on March 14, and since that time, no comments have been received. Is there any further public comment today? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Mayor, I'd move for adoption of ordinance 1110593 on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and that on second reading, we adopt ordinance number 11-10,593. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Angel.
Aye.
Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Commissioner Vanir.
Aye.
Mayor Peck.
Aye. Motion passes four to zero.
Item 8.2, first reading ordinance number 11-10,594, amending ordinance number 11-10,588 in Chapter 14, Section 14-57.6 and Section 14-57.8 of the Slina Code pertaining to the discharge and the sale of consumer fireworks.
Mr. Andrew.
Should have a modified blue sheet up there from what first went out, and this does contain all the necessary cleanup items. Mr. Bankston was good enough to point out that Section 1457.8 doesn't deal with stands, but it does deal with the use of fireworks and inappropriate uses, and that section also had the 100-foot dimension in it. So that has now been modified to change that to 300 feet as well for consistency. And since the community is anxious to get the ground rules in place for stands, and we did not have an ordinance available for you on first reading last meeting, we think it would be helpful to consider taking these cleanup amendments, approving them on first reading, declare an emergency, and do second reading on the same day, and then there wouldn't be any need for this to come back. I'd be happy to address any questions, but basically, the two items was to change the 100-foot dimension to 300 everywhere it appeared, and in helping city clerk, we did not catch 1457.8 reference, but that's now been addressed in the ordinance you have in front of you.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Is there any public comment? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Mayor, I'd move for adoption on first reading ordinance number 1110594, amending ordinance 1110588 in Chapter 14, Section 14-57.6 and Section 14-57.8 of the Slina Code pertaining to the discharge and the sale of consumer fireworks.
Mr. Andrew.
Should have a modified blue sheet up there from what first went out, and this does contain all the necessary cleanup items. Mr. Bankston was good enough to point out that Section 1457.8 doesn't deal with stands, but it does deal with the use of fireworks and inappropriate uses, and that section also had the 100-foot dimension in it. So that has now been modified to change that to 300 feet as well for consistency. And since the community is anxious to get the ground rules in place for stands, and we did not have an ordinance available for you on first reading last meeting, we think it would be helpful to consider taking these cleanup amendments, approving them on first reading, declare an emergency, and do second reading on the same day, and then there wouldn't be any need for this to come back. I'd be happy to address any questions, but basically, the two items was to change the 100-foot dimension to 300 everywhere it appeared, and in helping city clerk, we did not catch 1457.8 reference, but that's now been addressed in the ordinance you have in front of you.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Is there any public comment? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Mayor, I'd move for adoption on first reading ordinance number 1110594, amending ordinance 1110588 in Chapter 14, Section 14-57.6 of the Slina Code pertaining to the discharge and sale of consumer fireworks.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we pass ordinance number All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero.
Mayor, I declare an emergency of...
Do we make a motion on these separately?
Mayor, I move that we declare an emergency for second reading on today's date.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we declare an emergency exists for a second reading of this ordinance on the same date. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero. I'll accept a motion for the second reading.
Mayor, I move we adopt on second reading ordinance number 11-10,594.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt on second reading ordinance number 11-10,594. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Angel.
Aye.
Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Commissioner Vanir.
Aye.
Mayor Peck.
Aye. Motion passes four to zero.
Item 8.3, resolution number 116811, authorizing the offering for sale of water and sewage system revenue bond, Series 2011. Subitem 8.3A, first reading ordinance number 11-10,595, authorizing providing for the issuance of the water sewage revenue bond, Series 2011.
Mr. Franz.
Mayor and Commissioners, these two actions kick off the bond sale process. For the three projects we've identified, replacement of approximately $4 million worth of waterline, moving meters from private property into public right-of-way, and replacement of our water metering system citywide. As proposed, this would be an issue in a par amount of $20,515,000, providing for the reserves, costs of issuance, and so on. Interest rates on the issue are currently projected to vary from a low of 1.4% for the short term, up to about 5.05% for the longest maturity. Waterline replacement project, metering upgrade were contemplated in our five-year capital improvements program. The meter relocation element of the program was not included in the program. However, we are recommending continuing to pursue that as a matter of getting those meters moved timely. Cash flow from the meter system upgrade provides sufficient resources to pay for that project. We feel we can do the project within the confines of the existing rate structure. Action needed today is to pass a resolution which basically authorizes the advertisement for sale and approves the preliminary official statement, and then to do the first reading on the bond ordinance. I would say that we're evaluating the sizing of the issue, and I shouldn't be surprised at all if on second reading, we come back with a reduced size due to the ability to pay for part of the project in cash, but don't have solid numbers on that yet. We're still working on that, so... Be glad to try to answer any questions.
Questions of staff? Thank you. Is there any public comment? Looks like we need two separate motions here, so I'll accept a motion.
Mayor, I'd move to approve Resolution 116811, authorizing the offering for sale of water and sewage system revenue bond, Series 2011.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we pass resolution number 11-6811. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero.
And Mayor, I would move to adopt on first reading ordinance 1110595, authorizing providing for issuance of principal amount of water and sewage revenue bond, Series 2011.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt ordinance number 11-10595 on first reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero.
Item 8.4, re-award of personal computer bids for 2011.
Mr. Alfs.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Three weeks ago, the City Commission awarded our 2011 PC bid. It was for 50 personal computers at a cost of $624 each, for a total cost of $31,200. As we have done in previous years, the winning bidder was required to furnish CT with one PC as configured per their bid. We require this so we can assure the bid specs were met and we don't get 50 misconfigured PCs. This one PC is also required to be delivered within seven calendar days of awarding of the bid. The winning bidder did not deliver the required PC within seven calendar days. Component price changes between the time of the bid submittal and the bid award made it economically infeasible for the vendor to complete the contract. Another condition of the bid was a remedies clause. You have that before you in the blue sheet, but in layman's terms, it says that if the selected vendor does not perform, they owe us the difference between their bid and the next highest bid. The next qualified bid was at a cost of $658 each, for a total cost of $32,900. This is a $1,700 difference. Under item A in your blue sheet, the bidder that did not perform owes the city $1,700. The nonperforming vendor does understand this and has provided the city with a letter in your blue sheet that states they will pay half of that upon request and the next half within 30 days. The next qualified vendor has been contacted, and they are still willing to meet their previous bid of $658 apiece, for a total cost of $32,900. Staff recommends rescinding the previous bid award to Envision Computer in reliance upon its commitment to pay the difference between this bid and the next qualified bid in the amount of $1,700, then awarding the bid for 50 PCs with Windows 7 to JPK Micro Supply in the amount of $32,900. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions of staff?
Will this company then have seven days to turn in a PC to you, and you go through the same rigmarole as you mentioned?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Looks like we need two separate motions on this. Jason? If I could... I'm sorry. If I could interrupt, looks like we need two separate motions on this, one to rescind and then one to award. That can't be done in one motion, can it?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I'd move that we rescind the computer bid that was awarded to Envision Computer Solutions. There you go.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we rescind our previous award of a computer bid to Envision Computer Solutions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero.
And Mayor, I would move we award the computer bid to JPK Micro Supply for the amount of $32,900.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we award our bid for personal computers to JPK Micro Supply in the amount of $32,900. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero. Is there any other business?
Mayor, since our vote last week, and I hate to do this, I've had a lot of consternation about this contract we awarded to Barbara Gregitis regarding the artwork on South Ninth. I keep coming back to that contract language, what kind of discretion the commission has on these types of awards, and then I also keep coming back to, is there anything else we can do with those funds? So for that reason, I would move that we reconsider the contract award awarded to Barbara Gregitis for her sculpture work on South Ninth Street.
My question is, when this is reconsidered, what are the next steps?
Okay, we were just kind of looking at that to make sure we're on the same page procedurally.
Right.
Looking at your rules of procedure with regards to the action of reconsideration, and what that says is, is that if an item is reconsidered, it says, "The effect of the adoption of the motion reconsider is to immediately place before the City Commission again the question on which the vote is to be reconsidered and the exact position it occupied the moment before it was voted on originally." So coming back to the question of, does that mean that the motion in the second on the item that had occurred at the prior meeting still stand in the item, the reconsideration is simply the vote, or whether you have to start with a new motion in the second, interpreting that, I'll defer to Paula to not if I'm stating this, but we believe after relooking at this, that the motion and the second currently stand so that the action would be to revote. But you have other actions potentially, if you wanted to move forward with those.
My reason for asking is, Commissioner Angel, are you wanting to reconsider the vote because you feel like it needs more dialogue, or to reconsider exactly the motion that was made last week? To revote on what we voted on last week?
Eventually to revote, but I have additional questions regarding those three issues, and I don't know if we could put off additional discussion until next week's meeting to give notice to the public that may want to come in and give input.
Yeah, I think it depends on how you would like to do that. If you have a lot of those topics that you'd like to discuss as part of whether you should choose to reconsider, you could bring those out, because in order to reconsider, you need to do that at this meeting. It's the next meeting after the meeting that you took action. So you could do that. You could, in essence, make a case or discuss those issues related to the reconsideration. Well, let's just say that you have that discussion, and you choose to reconsider, you all vote to reconsider. It doesn't mean you then have to vote on the contract again this meeting.
Okay.
You could vote to postpone that to the following week.
So you can postpone it to get...
So you can certainly make your case one way or another on the reconsideration aspect only at this point, if you'd like to do that.
So my question then to Commissioner Angel is, are you wanting just to... You need more information and more dialogue regarding that, and that's why you're asking for the reconsideration? Or are you prepared to revote on that issue as it stood last week?
No, that's what I just... No, I don't want to revote tonight. What I would ask we do is if we have an affirmative vote to reconsider, then have a motion to set it over to next week, give notice to the public that they want to come have input. But I would also at that next meeting have additional questions for staff.
And I will second her motion.
Real quickly, we have some people, it looks like, in the crowd today that may be here, or may have taken time to come today to make comments, and I'm trying to figure out if there's anyone that would like to make a comment today and not have to come back next week if there's an appropriate time.
Yeah, I'll defer to Paula, but I believe you have the opportunity to discuss and debate the motion to reconsider, which pretty well opens it up to about anything you want to talk about here. And quite honestly, it might not be a bad idea to do that. In the end, if you should choose you don't want to reconsider, it'd be nice to have the foundation for that, and you could choose not to, or obviously you could choose to reconsider. So I think it'd be...
After the discussion?
Yeah, and the other thing is, if you have questions regarding policy, protocol, anything like that, too, we'd be happy to try to answer those for you.
So you're saying, open it up for discussion before we...
Yeah, I think you can, right at this point, that motion to reconsider can be handled, and second, can be handled like just about any topic, which means you could ask for, if you have questions for staff, you could open it up to the public, whatever order you'd like to do that, it's fine.
Let's go ahead, before we vote on the motion to reconsider, then let's go ahead and...
I have a question for staff. Is there any information, any new information that was not presented last week, or that was withheld from us last week?
I'm not sure if there's anything withheld. There were different questions that came about regarding this.
No.
No, as far as...
That's not what I'm asking.
Not aware of any information that was withheld.
There's no new information.
Regarding the actual contract?
Regarding the actual contract.
Well, the direction last week was to authorize staff to include the language that you approved in concept, which would allow the City Commission on a relocation or removal situation to provide, it was pain and best practices language, to provide 90 days' notice to the artist, and if there's agreement, fine. If there's not, you have unilateral ability to remove or relocate. We also have language that, a draft language that would go to the artist that deals with if there's an imminent threat, we would notify the artist, but we wouldn't wait the 90 days because imminent means it could fall on something, or it could be damaged even further itself. We could move forward. So as it relates to the contract, that would be the only new type of information based on the direction given.
We knew about that, but...
Yeah.
And last week, someone did ask about our other contracts with artists for public art, and whether they contain similar language on restricting our ability to remove or alter. Was that looked into?
Yeah, I tried my best. Last week, we kind of thought that was more of a future discussion, and so with request, I tried to, this afternoon, take a look at that for you. We've got, this shouldn't take very long, but let me pull my summary here for you. What I tried to do is, I tried to look at the animal shelter contract, the North Ninth Street contract with the lights near the bridge, the North Ohio Bridge, the municipal court contract and the water plant. What I found based on, and it was a little bit sketchy trying to do a quick look at these things, but the municipal court project and the water plant project ended up having the artist contracts separate or separated from the general contractor and from the architect. The animal shelter, North Ninth and North Ohio, they were all part of it, and so you're looking at pretty thick documents in there. From what I know so far, I don't believe you're going to see the language that we were talking about of any sorts in those contracts, which were handled directly through the designer and the general contractor process. I could be wrong, and I still need to check it, but I don't believe, based on a preliminary review, that you're going to find that in there. The municipal court project, I could not find the actual contract. I did find an executive summary, and it did reference copyright, it referenced attribution and those types of things, so you do have those same topics included in that one, I believe, but I could not get to the actual contract yet. The water plant contract, I did have that contract, and it did not have any of that language. Now, a lot of these are before the 2007 public art policy, and if you look in the policy, it does address those, not specifically to say it has to be this language or it has to be that, but it references the Federal Copyright Act, and it also references those topics, and basically provides some guidelines for application and references that they need to be included in the agreement. So it's not a real clear, you have to have this or you have to have that type of language in it.
Thank you. Is there any other questions?
Well, I was also... I guess I'd like to talk a little bit about our, what kind of discretion we have. I was under the impression that this policy required we set aside X percent of project funds for public art, and that those funds were required to be expended on public art attached to that project. Is that correct, or do we have discretion on what we set aside?
It's close. When you look at your public art agreement, it says up to 5% of the related CIP construction costs, so anything not to exceed 5%. And this project, if I recall, does not hit the 5%, it's a little less than that. And that's basically intended to be looking at direct costs. It's not to say that you could have indirect costs if you have a designer involved. Now, in this particular case, you don't have those, but in other projects, you might if it's integrated. Mike's Greg kind of made a note, not every CIP project has to have public art. There's a process outlined in your policy that outlines that, and it's obviously recommended to you, and when you adopt the CIP with a total number, if it is to have public art, that's anticipated in the budget, and in this case, in the budget and then in the bonding, and then in all the actions that follow that.
Then if Mr. Franz is here, could you talk about if we were to consider revoting, could these funds be applied toward any other projects? I realize we have the written report, but it might be helpful for the people that are present to understand what could happen with the funds if this contract is revoked on.
Essentially, by following the prescribed procedures, leftover funds in a project like this can be applied to other appropriate projects. Fundamentally, the arbitrage treasury regulations prevent us from having more than $100,000 in residual funds on any project. Actually, it's stated as the lesser of 5% or $100,000. In this particular case, $100,000 is the ruling amount. If we have more funds than that left over, then there are typically a number of ways we can go. We could find something more within this project scope or area that we could enhance the project with. We have done that on some occasions. On South Ohio, I believe, we did some enhancements to the path, some utility work, some crosswalk work, I believe, because there was a little bit of money left over, and we decided to apply it to those items. Outside of that, you can expand the project area sometimes by considering a resolution that basically redefines the size and scope of the project. For example, if there was a cross street that needed improvement that was not included in the same project, there might be ways of doing that by redefining the boundaries, or taking other actions that might be necessary. For example, if it's not a major traffic way, you may have to redefine it as a major traffic way, and so on. Typically, proceeds for a project like this can be reallocated to other projects that were funded by the same bond issue. In this case, this project was included in the bond issue with the Aquatic Center, and also with the financing of the last temporary note that was done on the North Ohio project. That does have some potentiality here. There is a final audit from KDOT showing that there's some money left due for the North Ohio project. We're working through that now. We think that that amount can be reduced, but we're not sure There is a, is a, is a final audit from KDOT showing that there's some money left due for the North Ohio project. We're working through that now. We think that that amount can be reduced, but we're not sure if it can be eliminated with KDOT. So there is a potential there for application of these funds. And then finally, you can reallocate the funds to other projects for which you had either planned on issuing bonds or for which bonds could be issued. Two come to mind. One is the design fees on East Magnolia Street, and the other is that we currently have a fire pumper truck scheduled out of sales tax. Now, we have typically not financed those smaller fire trucks, and I say smaller, it's scheduled at $450,000, so it depends on what you call by small. But we normally have issued bonds for like the, you know, ladder trucks and so on that run upwards of $800,000 apiece, so that is, is also a possibility. There is, from talking to bond counsel, likely some legislative, as well as some regulatory actions that we would have to take in order to do that, but it could be done. I think I covered all of them.
Excuse me, I think that's what you're mentioning here in your, in your memo, of which you mentioned, and I, excuse me if you already mentioned these, we had a couple distractions up here. Did you mention the East Magnolia improvement comes under that?
Yes.
And did you also say, did I hear you talk about the fire?
Yes.
Pumper replacement? Okay.
Yes.
So that would require some legislation by us?
Yes, and there would be, there would probably have to be some refiling done with the, with the Internal Revenue Service, the Treasury Department, some amended filings, which of course, bond counsel is good about taking care of for us, as well as there would have to be some approvals received from the Attorney General's Office in order to redirect these proceeds to a project that was not originally contemplated.
And then the other thing that, did you also mention that we could also use these as payment?
Oh, I forgot that, yes. The, the last one, and the one that bond counsel least recommends in these circumstances, is that the remaining proceeds can be used to apply to the principal payment on the issue from which they were derived. And in this case, it, it may be a bit problematic to do that because we've already levied the taxes for this year's payment, which comes due in October. The following principal payment is in October of 2012, and that puts it out, you know, quite a ways into the future, and there are some timeframes to consider for this in terms of being completed after the project is complete. That, that puts it out almost 18 months into the future, which is, which is stretching the, well, it may be exceeding the allowable limits. Bond counsel was at first fairly enthusiastic about that, and then when she looked at the timeframe, she kind of said, well, okay, that, that may be a little bit of a problem. So.
Thank you.
Commissioners, if I could, I can, if you'd find it helpful, I would be happy to take you through basically what the steps are to the establishment of a, of a public art project, so you can kind of see the whole picture of the actions from the very beginning to the very end. It's up to you, take about one minute, I think, but I'd just offer that up to you.
That'd be helpful.
That would help, but could you also, these contracts that we have in front of us now, are these the same as from last week, or are these with the changes?
The documents you have in front of you are last week's versions, yeah. Well, basically, like I said, this won't take long. It starts with the policy, which was approved in 2007, which outlines the basic structure of these things and how we're supposed to look at projects, how they're funded and so forth. And then the next step is including a project in the capital improvement process, and the policy provides for how you do that. And so then, once it's in the capital improvement process, which is a five-year plan, at some point in a, in any annual budgeting process, you, you will authorize that project to occur in that budget year, and in essence, you'll authorize the project. You'll say it's okay to do that, that project. And then following that typically is you'll have bonding authorization if it's a large project, in this case, the South Ninth Project was. So you'll take formal action to authorize bonds up to a certain amount that anticipates the full project, including the public art. And, and also somewhere in that similar time, particularly once we know it's in the CIP, and once we know that the project's authorized, you'll see the commencement of the selection process, and that's when the Arts and Humanities Department and the CAD Committee and so forth are all involved, and what they do is they solicit that interest, depending on which process is used, and that all depends on the type of project that we're looking at, the type of infrastructure project and type of art. And so they send that information out, let's say in this case, to maybe a group of artists, and expect the proposals back. And in this particular case, they had proposals that they formally reviewed and scored and with committees and all that, and ended up with a recommendation. And then what happened is, is they brought that recommendation to the city commission, and I think there were two or three, there were three choices and two with a lot of emphasis on them. This one bubbled to the top, and then at that point, there was an authorization to move forward with the artist at a certain budget amount, and then pending the development of a contract that would, in essence, formalize the deal. And then the final action, I shouldn't say the final, the next to the final action is the approval of the contract, in which you vote, which is what occurred last week in this particular case. And then the final, final action is getting signatures from the mayor in that case who was authorized to sign it, and from the artist. So that's, that's basically from beginning to end what you look at when you do that. And this, this project followed all of that from the very beginning to the very end, basically past the handshake stage and into the formality, and it got, it's, so when you look at it, you're, you have a practical obligation there, but still, you don't have legal obligation, so it all depends on how you want to look at it. You, you do have the legal ability to reconsider and to take action not to go forward, so it's, it's important that you do understand that. And then it's about, the policy question is, is how you value that practical obligation, and that's really what you need to discuss among your, among each other and figure out.
Might open this up for public comment, if there's anybody here from the public who'd like to comment on the potential motion to reconsider here. If you'd come forward, please just state your name and your address.
Jack Burbach, 917 Plaza Drive. I've been down here 30 years. Since I came down here, I like Salina real well. I've got one major forum aside, that's just P Pickin' Art. The Salina City Commissioners seem like they can throw thousands and thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars in art around town here, and particularly right now when things are so hard. They can't give their public employees pay raises. They can't fix the streets. Their building out here that they've got, where they have all their functions going on, they can't, they have to get extra money paid for that. Seems like hardly a day goes by in the paper, but what the city isn't having to spend something on an emergency basis, from fixing a riverbed all over. And I'm surprised, from all the comments I've heard down here the last few days, since they came out with this new art program going for $246,000-plus dollars, that this room isn't full of people complaining about it. I want to, I've, I've never been to a meeting down here to express my opinion and everything. I've had a lot of things come up, but I've never seen any city, town, or state, and I've been all around a lot of them, spend as much money on art as they do here in Salina, and let everything else in town go to hell. Thank you, sir.
Certainly appreciate your willingness to come up and speak. Are there further comments?
I have kind of a question, because I, I asked this comment last week when this was being voted on. As I understand, if you're reconsidering, has it changed? Has, has the artist come back and said, listen, we don't want to let you move the, the sculpture? Or, I mean, is that what this is in relationship to, or no?
No, the, the motion to reconsider, I think encompasses a lot of different concerns. Really isn't, it doesn't have anything to do with, you know, having it in one spot versus another.
Okay, because what I gathered from some of the questions that you guys had last week was that there, there really wasn't any, it sounded like they moved it, but there were no documents showing this is where it's going to be, this is where we thought it was going to be, this is what it is. What I got from you was that, and I agreed with, and I wanted to say it at the time, was that if you can't move it, then, and it's not in the place that you wanted it originally, then really, what kind of control do you have? Because you are spending an awful lot of money on a piece of artwork that you, you can't move if it's, if it's being moved. And so my question is, is that, is it even in the, I'm not far, sure far, how far south it's being moved, but is that location that it's being moved to the south, is that within the project area of that road reconstruction even? I mean, if there's no map showing where it actually is going to be, how do we know that it's in the area that's part of the project?
We do have, we do have sort of a conclusive documentation that shows where it will be now.
Okay.
It is in a different location than some of us had anticipated being, but it is within the scope and the area of the South Ninth Street Improvement Project, so it does certainly fall within.
Okay, so basically, the artist still may be open to move it, you know, us moving it if we deem it necessary?
Now, one issue that came up last week that you might be thinking of as well was part of the commission's concern was our future ability to move it. Certainly, if a decade or two down the road, we needed, for whatever reason, to move that installation to another area of Salina, part of our concern was our ability to control the destiny of the art project and also the piece of ground it's on without having to get prior approval from the artist herself. And so that, that's part of that concern last week as well.
Okay, so if we, if, if that is the case, and in the future, we do want to move that, is, is what your motion is, is that to say that, that's a point that we're, that you're going to stand firm on?
Sorry. The motion is to reconsider the vote last week.
Entirely.
If the motion to reconsider is approved, then we're, I believe, back to where we started last week and can reopen everything.
Because if I, if, if I'm not mistaken, is that, was that vote that was taken last week to authorize the city to negotiate that? And if that's the case, is it, is it the, your intention that that be non-negotiable or that that also is negotiable, the movement?
Well, the wording we advised staff to look at in the contract language emphasized, basically that we, we felt it was important that we control the ability to move that in the future.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Further comments?
Am I allowed to make a second one?
In just a second, I'll let you stand up if you'd like to. We've got Mr. Anderson.
Mayor Peck, there's one thing that I'd like to say before I respond with some prepared remarks that may help you in, in the discussion and the decision that you have before you, and that is that I feel like there was a misunderstanding or mischaracterization last week that the Salina Arts and Humanities Commission or the work on the CAD Committee was not keeping the best interests of Salina or the city commission in mind. And in four years of working with CAD as a member of the community, as an artist representative to that committee, I can assure you that the discussions that we've had, the work that we've done, the concerns that we've expressed have been with being fiscally responsible and, and being respectful of the city and the difficulty that's associated with something new and seemingly unimportant as art. And there was no disrespect to the commission or avoidance of, of the, of the topics that were concerned to you. Part of it was that none of us on staff or within the committee were really at liberty to speak to the details of a contract or what an artist might do. It wasn't to protect an artist. And so I, I'd just like for you to know that. I, I think that the cities, the, the concerns of the city of Salina are, and to the CAD policy, are very important to us.
Appreciate that.
And if you can give me just a second.
Sure.
July 17th, 2000, the Salina City Commission hereby establishes a community art and design program for the creation and integration of art into our communities' public and private spaces and to the public appreciation thereof. This action celebrated 25 years of the Smoky Hill River Festival and success of a thriving cultural community. Numerous studies involving a wide cross-section of the community indicated that citizens wanted Salina's outward appearance to reflect its cultural excellence. This decision was not made in a vacuum. A broad cross-section of the community gathered to craft the City of Salina Community Art and Design Policy, which was adopted in February of 2007. The policy included feedback from hundreds of citizens, guidance from nationally recognized professionals, and is designed to follow the best practice in the field and includes input from community, city staff, and design professionals. The policy is flexible and allows the city to provide art and design opportunities for a variety of budgets and timelines. It's a good plan. It's a well-designed plan. It's a plan that can give commissioners the security and knowing that the best and brightest local and national resources have been used to develop a proposal that comes before them. Your job is not an easy one. I am fully aware of the negativity that's generated by public art. In addition, many are concerned with the current economic climate, while others are troubled that city government and taxpayer dollars are being used to pay for public art and design. Further complicating the issue is that other than city commission meetings, little public education has been done regarding the merits and value of public art. Public opinion has been framed by limited information from the media and word of mouth. Perhaps one of the greatest mistakes in this process is that the citizens who support public art and design have neglected to express their thanks and support to commissioners who have supported this important policy. The CAD Committee and Salina Artists and Arts and Humanities has been respectful of the city's fiscal resources. It's used local and regional artists for numerous projects in schools, parks, and other public places. Occasionally, we turn to nationally recognized artists for some work, such as now South Ninth Street. The committee has yet to recommend spending all that it has been allotted, in some cases turned potential projects down because of their cost or a minimal impact to the community. This group has been anything but irresponsible or reckless. Barbara Gregitis' silver lining promises to be an important icon for the city and for our southern gateway. The budget and artists were approved by the city commission almost a year ago. The South Ninth Street Committee included architects, engineers, city planners, planners, South Salina businesses, CAD representatives, numerous other city staff, as well as local and nationally recognized artists. The contract presented to you last week comes at no small expense of human and financial resources, and rest assured, this is an excellent proposal that you will be proud to say that you helped make possible. The Community Art and Design Committee, along with support from Salina Arts and Humanities staff, are developing a comprehensive and broad-based public awareness and education program for the community. This initiative will improve the public's awareness, understanding, and appreciation of public art and design, from Civil War soldiers at the entrance of Oakdale Park to the Trifinity sculpture on the grounds here, to silver lining on South Ninth Street. Even though this effort will not eliminate all of the negativity towards public art, it will give citizens a larger context to consider the value of public art and design. The Salina Streets Department makes travel and mobility efficient and practical. The Parks and Recreation Department provide beautiful places to relax and play. The public utilities provide services we need to be comfortable. Police and fire protect our citizens and provide security and safety. City engineers give us the science we need to ensure we live in a well-belt and well-designed city. Public sanitation keeps a clean place to live. Many other departments and programs provide important services that our city keep, to keep our city running efficiently. Salina Arts and Humanities is the department that helps define us as a dynamic and vibrant community. Our outward appearance through the public art and design is an excellent way to demonstrate our creative spirit and, to the citizens and visitors of Salina. our creative spirit and, to the citizens and visitors of Salina. To suggest that the arts and humanities is as important as streets, or police, or public utilities will bring smirks and eye-rolling by some. But it is important to realize that the design of a community is a critical component if Salina wants to grow and continue to attract and retain business, healthcare, and tourism as vital parts of this city. I've heard comments from some citizens, and even from the Salina Journal editor, Tom Bell, that right now might not be the best time. Some people don't mean "not now," they mean "not ever." Rest assured, that CAD will look strongly at the viability of future projects with the economy in mind. Art and design is not something you do with crayons when it's raining outside. It is an important part of what makes us human. Take a minute to imagine an animal shelter with a plain exterior, a water treatment plant with large unadorned concrete walls, public schools with neutral walls and floors, or North Ohio Overpass as an ordinary industrial-finished bridge, or the front of the police department with a cold and uninviting exterior. We are a better community because its citizens and leaders had the vision to embrace our visual public image. Please honor the budget you approved 11 months ago, and the contract you approved last week, and know that CAD and Salina Arts and Humanities will be good stewards of the city's resources. You will not regret your support of this project and community art and design. Thank you.
Thank you.
We also have a timeline for the South Ninth Project. We'd like to deliver the remarks that were just made, and a detailed timeline of that process. It clarified the question you had last week about that, the artist did not come to Salina until June 25th to see the specific site and work with city engineers to make that recommendation, and then the current director at Arts and Humanities forwarded that information over to the city offices, so it wouldn't, there may, I could see where there'd be an assumption that it was going to be south of Schilling Road, but, but in fact, that formal and final decision within the scope of the project wasn't made until later in June. But we will provide you with a printed copy of those.
Okay, thank you.
Brad, and just in case people at home don't know who you are, will you introduce yourself?
My name is Brad Anderson, and I live at 636 East Iron.
Okay, just in case.
Yeah.
I just have one quick question regarding the CAD Advisory Committee. I understand that it's made up of two Salina Arts and Humanity Commissioners, a practicing artist, an arts professional, a design professional, and two community-at-large members. Are your meetings, though, or whenever you've met, to discuss future projects, are they open to the public?
They are public meetings, and they are posted on the city's website of when and where those meet.
When things like this are coming up, are they very well attended by the public?
They are not. And I, this is a little bit of a casual remark, but I've talked to staff about this, and not wanting to violate the policy, but it would be my intent, when I'm not a CAD member anymore, and I'm a full-time city employee, that we would be sensitive to that time of public feedback, and whether it's addressing the commission in a work session, or having a well-identified and broadcast, open time for the public to weigh in on some of those considerations. If what we're currently doing doesn't give the city folks a voice that they feel that they need, then we will look for ways to improve that. There is that flexibility.
So you're currently a CAD member?
Yes, I am.
On the capacity of an artist?
Yes.
Practicing artist?
Yes.
I would like to thank, first of all, the commission for your actions last week. I think those were good, prudent actions. And a little of my background, I spent six years on the Kansas Arts Commission, and was chairman of that group. We met here in Salina, and must share with you the impact that Salina has on the rest of the state, and the number of people that says, "Why can't we be like Salina? We know we could grow our population, we know our citizens would be happier," and it was because of the art, and what we do in Salina for the art. I look back on a couple of things, and I think about, we've just recently gone through the whole issue of wanting to be a community of 50,000 population. If we want to do that by the next senses, we need to be different than every other community on the interstate. And in Kansas, of those communities over 10,000, there may be five of them that are not on the interstate. We need to show ourselves as being different, and our position, and our quality, and our involvement in public art is what will help us do that. So I would ask, and then also, I think one other point that the manager made, is you have a practical agreement. And another past role as a city commissioner was that you do follow your agreements, and I think your step last week did that. You're looking at 11 months of a practical agreement that has gotten delayed this long. So I would very much strongly support and ask that you vote no on this amendment, or proposal, however it's, whatever it's stated as, because I think that's what's, that's what's best for the future of Salina. The other thing that happens is that you look, and if we want to grow this community, we've got to be the community that's stepping out and ahead in Kansas. The communities that we compete with, we have to show that we're different, and the art for Salina sets us apart from everybody else. And public art in today, you look around the country, and those communities that are growing are doing public art, and it's, it's just smart, long-term, good quality for the future of the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Randy Graham, I live at 2440 Edge Hill. I just want to endorse what Brad and John Devine just said. I urge you to honor the contract that you've already approved, and I do believe that public art is important to attraction of new business, people coming in here to look at locating here. I know it's hard to measure, I'm sensitive to others in the community that question the public funding, but I believe it's, it's a good thing for our community and sets us apart. Thank you.
Is there any further public comment? If not, is there a motion?
Yeah, Mayor, I believe you have a motion and a second.
To reconsider?
Yeah.
To reconsider, that's correct.
That's correct, thank you. It has been moved and seconded to reconsider our previous adoption of the project last week. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes three to one. Is there any formal action? I guess I'm looking for direction as to what action the commissioner would like to take from here. Would you like to postpone? Need a motion to postpone as well, then?
Yeah, and in a motion to postpone, you'll want to establish the specific date to which you'll postpone it to. So for example, if it's next week, be, what, the 28th?
Thank you.
Mayor, I move that we postpone action on this matter until March 28, 2011.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we postpone action on this matter until our meeting next Monday, which is March 28. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes three to one. Is there any further business? Except a motion to adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero, we're adjourned.